Was just over a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. And when former Fort Myers police chief Doug Baker was fired in August 2015, Wink News reported he was making a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars a year. And if approved, Chief Derek Diggs will be making more than Lee County Sheriff Carmine Mercino, whose salary for fiscal year 2018-2019 was a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Trust Wink News to get you that vote once they make their decision. Now.
All right, Sarah, thank you.
Yet again, for the, at the second... Good evening. This is a sad day in the history of the city of Fort Myers. Yet again, for the, at the second meeting, you have disregarded the expertise of some fine law enforcement people in Skandis Streets and Kevin Anderson. I had my friend from District Five say this, he wanted to make some business decisions. Well, let's just look at this Ward Four, Ward Five. Your councilperson tonight, he voted against giving money to fund to keep the kids safe in the schools because it was a business decision. But then he turns around in the next issue and he votes to confirm a police chief and he doesn't even know the dollar amount of what the total compensation is. Taylor asks the question to the city manager, "What's the total compensation package? You're telling me that a man deserves two-hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but you don't know what the total amount is because you didn't read the contract? You just said that you like to have figures and you like to look at the bolts and stuff." At some point, we have to come and keep it real. You've got to start shooting straight with people. You can't say one thing and then, I don't know if you're the all-timers, I don't know what issue, I won't even get into that, what the issue is. But if you're going to say something, then you ought to mean what you say. The police chief is here tonight. If you do an inventory of the number of times he comes to the meeting, he's never here. But because he's coming here to get some money from you, I got to say to the gentleman from Ohio, I agree with Councilwoman Watson. There is no way in the world I would want to be the police chief of a city where 50% of the council, half of the city voted against him tonight. He's not wanted. But this is a problem that will be rectified because your good friend, Mr. Thomas, has a petition. And I encourage Skandis Streets and Taylor Watson and Kevin Anderson, sign our petition to make this position elected by the people. Because one thing we know for sure, we cannot trust a city manager to negotiate a competent contract. Because his contract that he negotiated, he gave away the farm. Do you know that the police chief will make less than the city manager? He makes one forty-five, or one ninety-four. The chief is going to be like at eight, one-eighty-two, but that's just in base salary. So you know what Said is going to do? He jacked up the city police chief's budget, or his salary. So when it comes time for his salary, he's going to say, "Well, I don't make that much more than him. I need to go up too." Nobody at the school district makes nearly what the superintendent makes. But that's what you did tonight. It is a disgraceful day when you have people on this council who won't listen to those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice. Fred Burson, it is disgraceful, in my opinion, that you didn't listen to Kevin and you didn't listen to Johnny because they know. But I want Fred, I want Kevin and Skreets to know something.
Personal attacks.
The next time they come to you and they want you to vote on something and they say, "Well, Rand is an expert on this," or Gail is an expert, disregard their credentials the same way they've disregarded your credentials tonight. That's my advice. Thank you very much. Disgraceful.
... agreement of the parties. Mayor, I've been blessed to have this opportunity to bring the chief that it helped us. And we've been negotiating on this contract. Gentleman says, "Why late?" It was a late agreement that we come up with. But I just want to make sure that we understand where we were three years ago and where we are today. If I may, Mayor?
Sure.
Based on the uniform crime reporting statistic from 2016 to 2018, crime is decreasing in the city of Fort Myers. Fort Myers PD is moving in the right directions. Tremendous progress has been made in the reduction of violent crime. Total violent crime was down 20.6% between 2016 and 2017, and 22.6% from 2017 to 2018. The implementation of new technology has helped the department develop a more comprehensive approach to the citywide policing. City View Cameras, Shot Spotter, and RVR Real-Time Crime Center, combined with the use of data-driven crime protection. Analysis have helped us get to this point. Promotion, recruitment effort strengthened the rank. And we are seeing the result, where we are and where we have been and what we are trying to achieve. Again, in the semi-annual statistic from January to June of this year, Fort Myers PD is seeing a positive downward trend in the crime during the first half of the 2019. Total violent crime is down 28.7%, with the biggest decrease being in the categories of rape and robbery. There have been less than half, half as many rapes and robberies reported in 2019 as there was in 2018 during the period from January through June. There has been a significant decrease in burglaries in the first half of 2019, representing a 40% drop from the same time period in 2018. Total UCR crime is down 16.2% between January and June of this year. Last week, we saw the Operation Triple Bean, multi-agency law enforcement operation from May through June targeting violent crimes. Ninety-day operations collected 45 firearms, almost 12 kilograms of the drugs worth more than, in my estimations, it's over a million, including marijuana, heroin, methamphetes and cocaine, and more than $100,000 in cash. Hundred twenty arrests in Lee County, still in initial phase of prosecutions. I'm sure I'm right on this one, but 90% of the arrests was in Fort Myers. These are the where we were three years ago and we are today. And we are moving in the right directions. And I'm proud that the chief works with all the agencies. And you have been meeting with the free group and they are telling you how they are cooperating with each other and working together. This is a working-together effort. I don't want to be isolated that we were four years ago. City of Fort Myers Police Department was isolated. It was working alone, not talking to any agencies around. This is what happens when you work together. And I'm proud to bring this contract. And I'm proud that I agreed, that Chief agreed to stay and work and get the job done. We are the number three in the state of Florida, or maybe state to whole entire United States with working with the technology to solve the crimes. And we have seen the result of it. And I'm proud to say sometimes we have, the chief goes to these conferences. Chief goes to these conferences and I'm proud to say that they promote our blues. Men and women in blue in those conferences.
Right.
They talk about where Fort Myers is, what Fort Myers has done. And that's where they respect him, they listen to him, and he has done a great job. And I'm pleased and honored to bring this contract for approval.
Okay. Well, I certainly support it. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have a few questions that I would like to ask. I would like to know the total cost of the compensation benefits in the chief of police contract. This should include health insurance, dental, life insurance, policy, retirement plans, estimation of transportation costs, and for his vehicle and gas. Can anybody give me that?
I don't have the total, the content number here. I didn't add those up. But I can tell you the compensation is a hundred eighty-two thousand.
Is that salary and?
No, that's the salary.
That's just the salary. So what is the total package?
We'll be glad to send it to you. I don't have the numbers.
So how can we make a decision when we don't know what we're making a decision on?
Well, I can tell you what those are. I think what it is, is we have the same benefits for the health, same as employees.
That's a no answer because we don't really have a decision on that.
So typically, benefits account for about 30% of the compensation?
Uh... Ellen?
Is that correct?
I believe it is 30 to 38%.
So that's what? That's another 60,000?
When you would add, take the pension, FICA, and the benefits, it's probably about a ni...
So you're guessing.
It's about another 80% really for the, I'm looking at Chris because she's got the numbers for pension.
I'm taking the numbers.
Thirty-eight percent pension and the health insurance and the life insurance would probably be about 30%. And it's just ballpark.
Additional 60,000 on top of that.
The contract's probably with everything about 230 to 250. I'd say close to about 230 with everything. That includes pension, everything.
The only thing that's changed in this contract is the salary and vacations.
And the gym, that gym, what Mr. Thomas was talking about, the $500 a month for gym, that should be out of there.
That's not unusual for the others in the city that have a contract as well.
All right. I'm just saying that's...
We are talking about somebody wants to become healthy. And I know we can go to the...
We have our own gym, right?
I understand. But you're talking about the police chief and he's going to our own?
I have to pay.
I understand that. But that's what we are trying to say.
I'm just saying.
Yes. I don't see any...
We're looking at benefits for an executive that we have not had in our police department for years. And I ran on the fact that this police department had good people, but there was huge corruption. And this chief has come in, he has addressed, the community cannot believe what he has accomplished in two years. He's educating or giving the officers an opportunity for additional education. He's been out there practicing very differently from what we've had in the past. And having been in the executive roles, what we're paying him is very fair. That's what you should be doing when you have somebody that's not just the police chief but is moving the department forward.
And I want to make sure that you have three contract employee in the city and these three contracts are compatible.
Mm-hmm.
This is three, three contracts as executive that Councilwoman Anthony is talking about.
Well, she has a right to her opinion. That's her opinion.
Deputy Chief.
Yeah, you have a right to your opinion. That's, that's her opinion. I have my opinion.
I understand that.
And it's not that, I just think this contract is too much. It's too much. I'm looking back, I look back at Doug Baker's contract and of course, he did increase for about 10,000. I think he started at 120 or 125 and he moved up after the three years, about 10, 15,000. I can't be exact. I just think this is too much considering that the sheriff office, officer, the sheriff makes 165,000 and he's over, over 700,000 people and we have an 87, 87,871 in the city and we're paying more than the sheriff department? I mean, that is something to think about. And I understand the chief has moved us a little bit forward, but I don't see the chief in my community. I haven't seen him.
Let me, let me just make sure that I understand this.
I mean, I haven't seen him. I haven't seen the chief. I've seen him up to the stars maybe once, twice, but I've asked the chief in previous years when he first came on, "Come with me out to meet some of the store owners, some of the people in the community." I'm still waiting right now. So I have a problem with that. I have a problem with that. If you're going to, if you want, you have the community police and, I mean, to me, it's not being community policing because I've asked them to do this. I've called him and he won't answer the phone for me. I've called his cell phone numerous times. So I have a little problem with that. And, you know, I just think it's too much. This contract is actually too much. We don't have room for growth for the next chief. I mean, if we pay this chief, we don't have enough money to pay you. You're going to want more than the chief, Said. When your contract come up, what's going to happen? We're going to have to pay you more than we pay the chief?
What I'm trying...
So are you willing to give some of your money to the chief?
What I'm trying to do is here is to...
Just like the guy with the golf club, the guy with the, in our golf department, he was willing to give back some of his salary. So you want to do that?
May I be heard, Mr. Mayor? May I be heard?
Yes, Mr. Alley, yes.
So the, the city manager under his power, under the city charter, is to appoint the city clerk, police chief, and fire chief, each subject to confirmation by the city council. So this is a confirmation motion.
That's what I wanted to, thank you.
So I moved it, you seconded it?
I... We said discussion.
I, right. You know, the, the crime stats are one thing. We've seen over the years how they've been, and I'm not saying they're being manipulated now, but, but stats can be played different ways. And while I do believe that crime is much better in the city, I don't get real excited over, over the stats. I'll tell you what does concern me is we just heard that the general employee or the police officers are still 5%, about 5% behind parity with Kate Corral. Yet, you know, we're, we're getting ready to vote on giving the chief a 20% increase of about $30,000 over his current salary, which does pay more than the state attorney, the sheriff, the commissioner of FDLE. I went online, looked all these up. So the parity now is on them to catch up with him when our police officers are still fighting and our general employees are fighting to catch up with, with other area municipalities. I, I feel bad that after nine months of being in this position, that I can't stand up here and adamantly defend this contract. And that's not through a fault of myself. I have expressed to you on numerous occasions my concern with community involvement or engagement, that so many times we're at events, especially in the Dunbar community, and not only do I not see the chief, but I don't see anybody from the police department represented there. And that, and I've shared that with you several times. Ms. Clyde, I don't know, what's the total payroll for the police department off the top of your head? Do you know it?
That was a question.
Not off the top of your head? I mean, I, we, looking forward, the, between the three top administrators who, I'm, I'm not being down on them, we're pushing over half a million dollars in salary just for those three. This all adds up. And it just, to me, this seems like an excessive amount of money for that position.
Just for the benefit of discussion, the chief was hired with $140,000.
I'm sorry?
$140,000 salary.
Mm-hmm.
The last three years, the employees, and an average in police department, they got 7.4% increase. If you just add those up, it will be 21% or 22% if we just would have given him the same type of increase. But that's where my number came from. After three years, it comes up very close to what I offered, we agreed upon. And that's where my numbering was, that's what my negotiation was. And that's what it took a long time to get here because, I have to be honest with you, he wasn't agreeing with that. He was not agreeing with that. It took me a long time to make sure that we are in the same...
Obviously, 7%, 7.5% of a police officer's salary versus 7.5% of the chief's salary is a big difference. And as I said in the workshop, 2% of nothing is nothing. So, I mean, come on.
I understand that.
That's, I, I just feel like that is, and I'm not attacking the chief, I'm just, that seems like an excessive amount of compensation for a city this size.
Well, you quoted, you know, state attorney and others, but you have no idea what their packages are. Salaries are one thing, packages are another. So often in those contracts, there are a lot of other things unless you've seen their contract.
No, I, I would, I feel comfortable saying that the way the state operates and that controls the sheriff, I mean, those positions are controlled by population. That's what dictates what the sheriff makes. And I can tell you that the clerk of the court audits the sheriff's department and the county, and they would not have tolerated, and I've got those expenditures right in front of me, not to change the subject, but they wouldn't have tolerated some of those expenses. So, you know, it's, it, it's not all is apples to apples. I get what you're saying. But when you look at the sheriff has a department he oversees that is three, probably three times the size of the Fort Myers Police Department, the state attorney is responsible for five counties, and then the commissioner of FDLE oversees law enforcement, I mean, he oversees the training of police officers in the whole state. You know, I mean, that's, that's a massive job. It just, again, I just think it's an excessive compensation package for a city this size.
And also, Said, we were kind of put in a spot when you, you know, you should have negotiated this a little bit better because of the fact that you had three of us last week going, just want to investigate the chief for these expenditures. So with that being said, if I was the chief, I don't want to be the chief here because you already got three people that's already asking about your spending in a city. Why would you want to even be the police chief here if you don't have the total agreement of the council?
In the last, last week, I mean, last meeting, and I said that we have a policy and you followed the policy, and we are going to look at our policy and bring it back to you for approval. We have a policy and that's what it was followed, and that's what the policy is for everybody. So we are going to look into that as a policy, whereas we are going to bring it back. But again, we need to look at the city of Fort Myers as urban. We need the city of Fort Myers that we have 86,000 people, but we get 120,000 people.
Eight-hundred-and-seventy-one.
I know. But in the morning, we get 125,000 people. This is the working area for the people. We are talking about urban versus rural police protections. And we have seen the improvements. We have seen the result. I wouldn't have brought the contract in front of you if I wasn't confident about the result that we have seen. But that's where my recommendation is. And Mr. Grant Alley said that this is just for confirmation.
So, okay, you have to bring us to approve the contract, but to extend it to extra additional two years, you wouldn't have to come back to us to ask us?
It will be because the contract is going to be renewed and I will bring it again at that point. If anytime I am renewing the contract, I'll bring it back.
I'm just, this is just a question that I want to ask.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything to say?
I'm good. You ready to call a question?
I have some comments, Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
And I want to say first of all to the chief and his staff and the many men and women who wear the blue, I'm proud of you for doing your jobs. I appreciate that. I ask the city manager, perhaps maybe three, four weeks ago, when I knew this was coming up, and I ask, would he mind sharing? And all you attorneys out there can say whether this is legal or he doesn't have to, I know what authority the city manager has. We've gone, I've gone through this before with a contract with previous administrations. And this is not adversarial, Mr. City Manager, but I thought it would be somewhat prudent, while you negotiating the contract for the future, out of common courtesy, and these are the exact same words I used once before, that somewhere along the line that you would give each council member an opportunity to sit down with you and the chief as we move forward to say, what are the goals and objectives, or how do you feel, or what are we doing? That opportunity was not afforded. And I think it was, you missed a valuable tool. Now, if your charter says you don't have to, I can understand that and I can live with that. But I think that sometimes, and these are strong words and they're coming from me, sometimes I think you devalue this council.
Yes.
Because I see on occasions that sometimes it's easier to say to us or to me, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than to ask for permission. I also think there should be a clause as we move forward and do some things different that you should give as we have public hearings, the community to say how they feel. And we know we're going to get a lot of people say this and that, but that's what we're here for, to listen and get the different perspectives. It may be great over here, but it may be hell over here. And people want to have this open communications. Again, I'm not bashing the chief, I'm not bashing the system because it's the system in America that we have. And until we make it better, this is what we have to live with. Just think if we didn't have it. But what I'm seeing here is, as I asked you today, an 18 to 20% increase. And I asked you when he first came, and I even said to him, you said 130, 140, I asked him, why would you accept this little bit of money? Maybe it wasn't about the money then. And we're dealing with other employees besides the police department, besides the fire department, but our general employees. I, I, you know, I stopped by to tell you that there's a lot of things that are uneasy that we have not been advised of. One of the questions I was ask you, and this is not against you, you and I are good friends, but we have to speak truth to power when we get a chance. Has the city attorney, Mr. Grant Alley, I call names, has he reviewed this contract?
Mr. Grant Alley had the contract on Thursday evening or Friday morning, either it's at Councilman Street. There is nothing changed in this contract besides those items that it was increased. The salary was increased, the vacations was increased, and the $500 for vacation, the gym was provided and some retirement. That was only increased based on there was negotiation and I was working on it. And Mr. Alley was provided by Ms. Galloway. And I, he, he sent me an email and I said, "I'm looking for the, just the form as a legal form." Because I didn't change the contract, the body of the contract completely from the previous year. There's only four item in there. It was negotiated, item is changed. It was not, I, I, he wasn't with me, you were right, he wasn't sitting down with me and negotiating. But I sent the contract after the contract was approved because the contract, the body of the contract was the same.
This is not what I would have wanted. I, I get away from this, "I," me and mine, but "we" and "us" it should be used more. Again, it's the process of how we got here. And in informing our constituents or to get some feedback in regards to what... get some feedback in regards to what we're really doing, especially when I hear you and the general employees that there's some serious concerns. The chief and his police officers do a very good job, I'm not knocking that. I could go back and say, you know, there's some ends that are not tied, even as I heard the representative from the union, Matt Sella's a good friend of mine, he worked, we and I worked together, he was a great officer. We still have people that are still on leave, maybe you don't have, or the chief don't have any control over that, but my gosh, man, two and a half years. Then we got another section over here where there's another investigation, and then you set this up for us with the free report, and they gave us an update, which was really, my question to them was, when are we gonna finish? Where is the closure? And, and, and again, the chief took a blueprint, he took a blueprint from the free report to do thirty-two things. He did those, I, I, I give him that credit. So, I don't have, I know some people are sitting around me saying, will he hurry up and get through, but thi- this is, this is not my dollar, even though I have a tax dollar in it, but it's somebody else's purse that's paying this, and it's not adversarial, but it's about the fairness of the process, and saying, we got it to Mr. Alley Thursday, he's on vacation.
Friday morning.
And, and, and that may be, he, he may be a speedy reader, maybe he can look at this, but I think it would have been incumbent for you and Mr. Alley and the chief to sit down, Mr., the, the chief didn't even talk to you, he had his own attorney bring this to you.
That's what we did the last time.
Okay, but I would think that I would wanna have a conversation with my council members and my chief, even if you had said, I ask you for the, the, the evaluation, what it looks like, I never got it, that's not, but, yeah, I asked, do you have evaluate, how do you evaluate the chief? Let's talk about it, never came back to me, which, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not used to it, but, I don't say much, but you gotta understand that Kevin and I was in law enforcement, and we know how to get information, we are not removed from being investigators. But then, I feel like you keeping something away from us, and I hope you're not, and I'm gonna share this, and you can do what you want with it, and Mr. Mayor, I'll shut up, but I don't like people stopping me on the street, and you may know about this, I don't know, asking me, why are we investigating public works? About some malfeasance, or misfeasance, or some reports that have been documented and turned in that almost hinges on criminality, I got that out the street. And, and then before you say something, 'cause I'm gonna hush, that you can deal with the mayor and the rest of this council somewhere else, this is not the place, if there is some dirty laundry, this is not the place for it. That's why I was talking about, maybe we need to have another session about this, but I, 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 this eighteen percent rate, thirty thousand, we got employees don't make that much, even with the economy, we don't know where that's going. Again, I conclude by saying, I think the chief has done a great job, I think his officers are getting much better than what it was before, but we paid two, three-hundred thousand dollars, all over a million dollars for the free report, and, and you know I was gonna say this, of what I had already told you. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for my comments, and, uh, I, 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 I know I'll sleep good tonight, because, see, these things are what keep me up at night.
Mayor, I just wanna make sure one thing, Councilman Street, we're out of the investigations. I'll take every allegations very serious, it doesn't matter where it comes from, if somebody comes and make any allegations, I've been doing this not on these positions, on my previous positions, I wanna make sure everybody's rights has been looked at, and if somebody tells you there is investigations, I will take everyone, every single one, serious, and I will look at it based on the investigations, and we will bring it up to the end, because I care about every single employees in the city of Fort Myers, from the pay, from the personality, from the respect, and I'm working hard to get everybody to the finish line. I just finished with the police, we are talking about the police chief contract, we are working with the general employees, we are working with every single one of them, and I, they know me, they can come to my office, and they come to my office, the same person probably stop on the street, he probably was in my office and asking the questions, I'll tell him the same thing, there is allegations, and we need to look at it.
And, and I know for a fact that when there's an allegation, and perhaps we asked for is, uh, is it not, you cannot comment on the details of the investigation, but what bothers us sometimes is that when we hear it out the street, because people do talk, and they think we should know what it is, and we have no clue, it particularly if it may end up in something that could be, and this is only an atmosphere of criminality, so I, I give you that much, but again, Mr. City Attorney, and the previous city attorney and I had this discussion, sometimes we just don't know what's going on in our city, but at the end of the day, these folk who are sitting out there and paying taxes want us to fix it, even though you manage the city, you need to be working with us to say, yes, this what, here it is, that's, that's a collaborative effort. Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to say this, but we got work to do.
I wanna say something. Mr. City Manager, I never think you devalue me as a council member, and I need to go on record and say that.
What'd you say, Nan Gail, I didn't hear you?
I'm sorry?
No, I didn't hear what you said.
I said, the city manager never devalues me as a council member. I need to go on record and say that.
And, and I'm glad she went on record to say that, but, see, apparently, sometimes we get the, the misunderstanding of what devaluation mean, not as a person, that we're not worthy enough to get information that's gonna, we're gonna find out from the wrong people and get the wrong facts, we deal with facts here, and I, I can understand how the kind lady from Ward Six feel, but it's not about me, it's not about her, it's about how we get information to the public, so that there is no atmosphere of wrongdoing. One of the biggest things we have in the country right now is that our constituents really have a dim view of government, and government starts with, all government is local, and I wrote a letter, I wrote four letters, and y'all welcome to the copies of them. I wrote a letter two weeks ago, Governor DeSantis, both Senator Rubio and Senator Scott, and Congressman Rooney, talking about the conditions of what we're having to deal with, and how we can support them, and how they can't remain silent if they're really truly representative. I got a response today from Congressman Francis Rooney, it was very favorable, and he said, how can we work together? Sharing some of the same things that you said, Johnny, I'm willing to listen and work with you. That's how we do this thing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm done.
I have one, I have another question, uh, from the last contract, what was the payout? Is there, was a payout at the end of this, after the fifteen, was there a total payout? Is there, like, with the school district, sometimes, um, you have, at the end of your term, you have a payout, if you still? It was, it was paid in full?
It wasn't in another contract.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm, actually, that's what I'm saying.
Whatever the sick time left, or?
Right, so that's a payout, what was the?
It's, it's the contract, it's, it employed the same way.
Did he miss days? Did he come to work every day? I'm saying, how do we know all of this?
That's my job.
Okay.
And I have done it, and I would just?
Okay, that's why I want, if that's your job, I wanna know the payout of the sick time and the thing, I wanna know the payout. You don't have that, those are things you should have came prepared with, when you're bringing a contract, we, we should know what, what you had to pay him at the end of the last contract, different things like that, you should have available.
This contract is continuing, if it was the end of the contract, I would have the coun- council, this is the payout of on this contract, but this contract is continuing, and I'm asking for approval of continuation of the contract.
We, we have a motion and a second, I think everybody's?
We're not debating yet, we're not too debating, I have some more questions, I mean, we?
You got the floor, you got the?
Yeah, we talking about spending a lot of money, y'all talking about spending a lot of money.
You have the floor.
Okay, I wanna, I have a questions on, um, the sixty-day notice of termination and, um, along with being paid twenty weeks of salary after, of, after you're terminated, could somebody explain a little bit in details about that?
If this contract gets signed, and the chief gets terminated within two months, until end of this contract, that sixty days gets in the effect, and we have to pay him off based on that, but the existing contract is over, this is a new contract, extension of the existing contract.
Further questions, comments?
I could say in conclusion, I just wish we could get some of those loose ends tied that people can say, yea or nay, we need to move forward, but, uh, that's why we're here, to get those, and, and I guess eventually, they will come, but I think they should have come before this, because we don't know what might come, and, again, it's your call, Mr. City Manager.
I know, it's not his call, it's our call, we have the last decision, really.
You know, we did, we did have the opportunity to read the contract, I read the contract, I asked you lots of questions, right, Mr. City Manager? Picked up the phone, said I read the contract, so, I mean, there was an opportunity to read that contract and ask questions.
That's why I'm asking questions for my constituents, I mean, I can ask the question myself.
So, he's been, he's been confirmed by you all upon his original appointment, now it's a, it's a contract issue, and the charter requires that when the city manager enters into contract, he gets city council approval, and that's what this is.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to put, you know, Mr. Alley on, on this spot, but when we approved the increase for him, wasn't it similar to, to the way this was? It was about a, um, what, twenty-something?
Same thing with the city manager.
And the same thing with the city manager. And, and I know, you know, to some people, it seemed like, boy, this is a huge amount of money, but you're talking about somebody that's under contract, that's not gonna be getting money again until the next contract comes into play. So, I, yeah.
No, I don't think that's correct.
Is that correct? Is that correct?
There is evaluations, and there is increase.
No money?
Based, okay, but I, you know, I'm just saying, we've done similar things for others that we're doing for Chief Diggs.
Uh, uh, you, you know, and I, I keep saying, hush, give me some tape, put over my mouth.
And let me finish this, Mr. Streets, and, and I will say that, you know, I do hope, you know, with, with the chief, that he, he does, you know, try to incorporate a little bit more outreach, I'm saying for me, and more at one, reaching out to me, and he has done that for me, so, you know, I, I'm not saying that he has never reached out to me, but he has reached out and asked if there was anything or, or anything, but I'm just saying, you know, asking him if he would do more of that for me.
One of the things is that people kind of miss, in this society, when you talk about law enforcement, law enforcement, and I'm just gonna use Fort Myers Police Department, does not belong to the police department itself, it belongs to the people of the city of Fort Myers, they are the stakeholders, they say nay or yea. That's what this is somewhat about, not taking anything from them performing their duties, but at the end of the day, they are not independent from the community or us.
Mr. Burson?
Thank you for those comments, Fred, let's move on.
It's waking up, midnight flying.
Look, is this, well, I've got several points I just wanna clarify and, and ask about, is this objections to the contract strictly about money, or is it about the job that Chief Diggs has done? I'm trying to, and I'm talking to, we've heard various opinions up here, so I'm basically directing the questions to the other council members, is it, is it strictly a money issue, or do you think he has or has not performed his duties? That's what I?
Well, if you ask me, I, it has nothing to do with his performance, it has to do with the process of the contract, the process, there's a process, you have a city attorney that has not even reviewed it, okay?
And I understand that.
And we can get through this, you know, maybe we don't even have to vote on this tonight, but if you, if that's you all's wish, fine, but I, I, I think, as I said earlier, the conversation between, and I would love to have it, the police chief, the city manager, and I, and, and is that asking too much?
No, no, it's not, and that's why I'm trying to just get some clarification, 'cause I want?
And it has nothing to do with him personally?
Well, I have?
I understand that, but, and, so, that's where I want to find out if, one, first of all, we answer to the public, we have the ultimate responsibility, and so I think the discussion we're having is, is, uh, very healthy.
It is.
So, what I'm trying to find out is, are we, as a body, dissatisfied with the dollar amount, performance, or the process?
Well, I'm gonna give you my opinion on it.
That, that's what I want you to do.
My opinion is, the dollar amount is too much. He's performed well, but not a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars worth, and you look, I look at this as if, to go back to Sheriff's Department, the sheriff make a hundred and sixty-five thousand, he's over way more people, so, do your math on that, you think his performance has been great?
Well, I don't know, I mean, I've never done an evaluation on it, I'm just?
Right, well, I'm just saying, you know, you, I'm just looking at the different individuals that's in high positions, and higher positions.
Right.
You know, so, I mean?
But, no, really?
We have room for no more growth in the, in the, in, in, in the contract, after paying a hundred and eighty-two thousand, if Said decides he gets the evaluation and get more money, then where we gonna go from there? Two hundred?
Well, I, I?
They're saying, we don't have room for growth.
I know, and what about you, Kevin, I mean, really, this is the only time we could ever have a, a discussion, is where we're doing it right now.
It's a little bit of both on all three. You know, I understand where the city manager's coming from with his, I, I read the evaluation, I was disappointed, I was expecting to get three of them, because there should be one per year, but there was only one, I didn't agree with it in its entirety, I agree with Councilman Streets in this whole process, I, I don't think it was the, the best managed process, I have some serious concerns with the dollars, um, while this, I, I know what they're saying with the stats, but I lived through the stats there for twenty-some years, and I've seen stats go, um, I can tell you that I tried to be very active in the entire city, I go to as many events as I can. I can tell you that I try to be very active in the entire city, I go to as many events as I can, and people ask me, what do you think about the chief? And I honest, I answer honestly, I don't know how to answer that, other than what I read. I don't know how to answer that, because what I hear from other people, and I know, I take it with a grain of salt, but I know there's a lot of people out there who aren't exactly thrilled. I, I know there are members of the police department who are not thrilled with the leadership, but I also know how that works. As I said earlier, I, I'm very conflicted over the fact that after nine months of sitting in this position, that I can't jump up and adamantly defend this contract.
Can't defend the contract or the?
Based, based on the money and, and performance. And that's not, again, that's not, I'm like Councilman Streets, I'm not attacking the chief as an individual or any of that. And I too, and I said this before, the best way to hold, to support the police department is to hold them accountable, and I support the police a hundred and ten percent, but I also think when things are not right, they need to be addressed. And I've shared with the city manager on several occasions, I have concerns that there are more issues similar to the Captain Rodriguez issue under the surface that are getting ready to bubble up, it concerns me, and.
Well, let me ask you, there again, because we're a body in the sunshine law, we don't really get a chance to do anything but what we're doing right now. Do you think that those Captain Rodriguez issues, do you think they're a direct result of Chief Diggs? Or do you think Chief Diggs is actually bringing some of those?
No, as, as Councilman Streets said, he, he came into a hornet's nest, I guess, is one way to look at it. He had a lot dumped on his plate, there was a lot of issues, there was poor leadership at that agency for numerous years, which has got the agency to where it was when he took over, and yes, there has been progress made in that area. But I, I don't know to what extent, you know, as you hear on the national news all the time, who knew what and when did they know it?
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that the city council not discuss the Rodriguez.
I, I agree.
I, I'm not wanting to discuss that, I, he just used an example, and I understand your concerns, Grant, but I, I'm trying, here, here's the conflict I'm having with the whole discussion. First of all, it's a big agency, and there will always be people who like the current administration, and there will be those who don't, and those who don't will always be anti-administration. I don't want to. I want to know that we're getting what we expected. We were asked to clean that agency up, and so what I'm trying to get to is, is he doing the job that he was hired to do a few years ago? And if we do not approve the contract, and Chief Diggs is to leave, or it's renegotiated, if it's not approved, would we find somebody else out there that's capable of going in and finishing the job and not have these same dissenters come after the new guy? So my question is, are we not better off to dance with the devil we have than to try to find? Because you, you may not be any better off. And, and we've spent, you end up causing a lot of dissension, so I'm trying to get to a point where, is it beneficial? Or is it just convenient? And that's where.
I can tell you, I, I can't answer, as I said, I, I can't answer some of those questions, all right? But I can tell you that chiefs come and chiefs go, all right? You know, the, the, the agency didn't implode when any other chiefs have left in the past. New chiefs come in, they take over, and, and they, they.
No, but obviously there was a difference in leadership, because some of the others got dismissed and whatever.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing, there's, you know, there were.
Corruption didn't happen under Chief Diggs, he was asked to fix it, I'm not necessarily defending him, I'm trying to go back to the scenario that he inherited, he was asked to, and you know, when you come in and, and start making drastic changes, it causes a lot of dissension. Because some of those people that may need to be changed are getting close to being affected, and they're the ones that are going to squeal the loudest, and there's the one you're going to hear from. So sometimes when a guy is doing the job, he causes a lot of turmoil, because he's getting rid of the ones that need to be getting rid of. And I, I don't know enough about the police department per se, I love all these officers, they know that on a personal basis. I like Chief Diggs on a personal basis, but what I'm trying to do is make a business decision. I don't want to just do it just for the sake of doing it. With, there again, like that earlier example today, we were talking about spending two thousand dollars or four thousand dollars. It's, it's more money than that, but at the end of the day, will we end up costing ourselves more money? And I'm not advocating either way, I'm just asking the questions, and I'm putting it out there for thought. Would we be, would we be better off without Chief Diggs?
I can tell you, and I, I can't answer that, that's, nobody could see into the future. I, I could tell you that from when I did the hiring, you could do all kinds of testing, until you hire someone and put them to work and you observe them, you don't know what you really have. You do your best to select the best. There, there, like I said, there's, there's plenty of people out there capable to come in and take over this agency. I'm not saying that, that's, I'm not pushing that, I'm just saying, there's, that, that shouldn't be a concern.
No, but you see, I guess what I'm trying to get to, we thought we had, on previous chiefs, we thought we had found that individual that was capable, and it turned out they weren't. So, we do have somebody that has shown a propensity to get in there and root it out, and so I'm asking you, would we end up with a chief similar to what we had in the past, and where we fostered a atmosphere of corruption?
That's something you're not going to know.
What's that?
That's something you're not going to know what you're going to get.
And that's.
Our decisions are going to be filled one day, nobody knows what they're going to get for the future.
That's exactly my point.
Don't know what we're going to get, but, like I said.
Is it worth the chance?
To me, the, the, my opinion is the contract is too expensive.
What's more important to you, the money or the performance? Because at some point in time, well, you, things aren't equal, that's not the way life works.
It ain't supposed to be equal.
Mr. Kazemi?
Here's, here's my, my concern, is that the terminology that you use, first of all, as Councilman, Councilwoman Anthony said for the record, you use the term devil, and I don't see the chief as that.
Well, I don't either.
But you said that, but we need to clarify that, because that's not what he is. He has, he has, again, brought peace out of confusion, but here's, again, it's the process and what we're going through with in paying other people and paying other employees, and how this process, and it may be legal, because the city manager has carte blanche in the charter. But, again, he had a blueprint, and he worked that blueprint fine. The bottom line here is, is about the money and the performance. I already told you, for my department, it's okay, I can deal with that, I've dealt with worse. But we still need to be able to be penny wise and dollar wise in regards to as we move forward with other negotiations. When you look at it as a whole, and this is a credit to him, the new vehicles, we needed them. The more officers, we needed them, the better training, we needed it, the shot spotter, we needed that. That's, we can give him that credit.
I know, and so what I'm saying is, first of all, when I referred to the devil, I wasn't talking about him personally.
I thought you were talking about me.
But, secondly, that was just a figure of speech, I think, I'm not the first to have ever said that, but. What you just said, all those things that you give him credit for, does that not have value? And if we had somebody else and they didn't advocate those, would it not end up costing us more in the long run? And that's the point I'm trying to get to.
Well, I, I can answer your question, it has value, but how much are we willing, and how far are we willing to go for is the monetary thing. See, it, it's, and I'm, I can't speak for the chief. I'm sure the money is not the issue, what, what is the issue with him, as it should be with any chief or any professional, is character. See, that's the thing that's going to follow you wherever you go, doesn't matter how much money you make. And, and if you take character to the graveyard, it's still going to be with you. The bottom line, if we want to move on, we got a decision to make, and we as individuals, we already know, we've said, it's not personal against the chief, it's the process, and maybe we need to have had an opportunity to hear what the future might hold with his goals and objectives, as listening to the council.
We, we have a motion, just for the, for the informations, as I said, we've been negotiating, and I've been looking at everywhere.
City of Carroll Springs, chief gets a hundred eighty-eight thousand. City of Fort Lauderdale, chief gets a hundred eighty-one thousand. City of Sarasota.
How many people in Fort Lauderdale?
City of Sarasota gets a hundred seventy-three thousand. When we talked about the populations, we talked about the number of patrols officers and the officer he has. We have a document that says he's still short of the number of employees, number of patrol officers. It has been proven to us that he's short, when he asked for forty, we are just giving him thirty. So we have, with the shortage of the patrol officers, he has done a great job, and that's what I look at all these. When I compare it, I compare it with the apple to apple.
Okay.
Well, Fort Lauderdale's population is pushing two hundred thousand.
Well, Sarasota's population is half of ours, so figure that, look, what, listen, we can jibber jabber back and forth on this, it's, it's a, it's a good discussion, but I, I'm ready to move on. But I'm not going to move on until I share my opinion, and some of it's opinion, some of it is information that I have sought and been given to help me sort through this, but much, in general, much progress has been made since Chief Diggs was identified, came to Fort Myers from Toledo, Ohio, and competed for this post in stiff national competition, I mean stiff competition. There were superior law officers vying, he was picked, he was ratified in a unanimous selection when he came, and I think the, Kevin, in all deference to your experience, and, you know, with regard to statistics and all, I think that the track record, statistics, real life progress that has been demonstrated do support that we do our best effort, that Said does his best effort to secure an agreement with Chief Diggs, which he has done. They're in agreement, he's bringing it to us for ratification. What's been shared with me as I move around the city is that the citizens of Fort Myers, in general speaking, I mean, you can't go take eighty-seven thousand, six hundred votes, but as far as I am able to judge, there is overwhelming support for this chief and the progress that has been made in the city of Fort Myers. You can look at the progress. It all needs to be improved, but the Free Report clearly demonstrated, and let me remind all, every citizen, that the Free Report is the most comprehensive examination of our FMPD, top to bottom, in the history of the city, in the history of the city, and it was pursued by this city manager and ratified by this council based on the recommendations of high-level law enforcement officials who said you need an independent outside review of your police department, and this is who we found, and with that recommendation was get, go outside the department and bring a chief in and hire the Free Report. We've done all that, we've made great progress, and the Free Report is years in the making. We, it ain't going to happen overnight, but I'm impressed, me personally, with the progress that's been made since we embarked on this to solve a problem where we were having some challenges. Here's another important fact, as I move around the law enforcement community in meetings, conferences here locally, Chief Diggs and our FMPD are supported by every single law enforcement agency that I engage with. They say he's on the right track, he's doing a great job, he's a great addition to the law enforcement community in our region. That's a big takeaway for me, the, the Free Report, as I mentioned, is still in play, it's going to be in play for several more years. We are heading in the right direction. It's a good, healthy debate for us to stop and have a discussion, it's a hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars, it's a lot of money. Said has to his disposal expert advice from Ellen in our HR department, statistics from other cities about what chiefs make, not only in Florida, but across the nation. And let me just stop there and talk about the nation a minute. We are in the history of our world in unprecedented waters, where it comes to anti-law enforcement sentiment in the world. For the sake of a few bad ones, there are too many people that want to just do away with all law enforcement and all military and have the Wild West. It gets exploited all the time, I personally am sick to death of it. We have superior law enforcement professionals, men and women, across the board, not only in FMPD, but in the whole region. And Chief Diggs is respected by them. Morale, this is unsolicited, we have the highest morale since, I, I've been here nineteen years, I've been here longer than any of you. And we have the highest morale that's ever been in the history in my recent time here, and how do I know that? Because police, men and women, officers, say to me from time to time, when I reach out and shake their hand and thank them for the service, "Mayor, thank you, things are good." I am certain it's not perfect, but it's better and getting better all the time. We're definitely doing the job that is required, Chief Diggs is, the evidence is clear to me. No, some of this discussion is not beneficial, I'll just share that. I, I believe there, there's a lot of questions that, that I can answer, because I've been here a long time. I've already said that it's the best in the history of the city, and I trust that our system of evaluation is, I'm sure, not perfect, but good enough to get this job done. If we need to circle back around after this and have a workshop on the system, whatever the system is or the process, then let's do it. I would yield to this council. We have certain experts on the council, Gail's one of them, who has been a career in personnel. And Teresa too, at Sprint. And that, and that too contributes. So, I support this contract, I think it's fair. I'm glad that Chief Diggs wants to stay, thank you, sir, and thank you for your service, and thank you for the FMPD that support Chief Diggs, and all those who might be watching who have shared with me your thoughts.
And he's built a great leadership team with the two deputy chiefs back there also.
Thank you, brought in experts in that regard too, so I, I'm not saying that there's nothing that's ever perfect. The council's not perfect, the city's not perfect, we, we are good, and we're getting better, and we're getting better, and we are embracing best practice, and if we weren't heading in the right direction, I, I would be sharing that right now. But I think all, all the evidence will support, including interviews with citizens, will support that we are very much heading in the right direction, and we can debate the one eighty-two, one eighty-seven, two hundred, two sixty, we can debate that, but I do know from my past private sector experience that when you go change in chief executive officers or leadership, top leadership, that it always costs you more money. And there better be a good reason to do that, to jump, and here, we do not have a good reason. In fact, we have the best reasons, in my opinion, to pay him and say thank you and move on. I support this, this contract, and I'm asking you, council, to give it serious consideration and support it. I support this, this contract, and I'm asking you, counsel, to give it serious consideration and support it, because we need to move on, and we are making great progress. And I, I should say too, one last word, thanks to all those who came and embraced the city as we were going through some challenges back five or six years ago. It has contributed in very positive ways to where we are today. I'm ready to call a question, and thank you for letting me say a few words of my opinion. And hopefully there's enough fact in there too. We have a motion to approve the contract as presented. We have a second. Who, who, who made the motion?
I made the motion, Teresa.
All in favor of the contract say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, let's start. Fred, just coming this way.
Well, I'm going to vote in favor of it, not because I'm happy with the process or the pay, but I do think the performance warrants retention.
Okay. Well, we can get statistics. We can help with that later.
So, that's, that's how I reached that conclusion just then.
Thank you. Johnny?
I voted nay, and, and like I said earlier, it had nothing to do with the chief or his performance, but I think it was the process and the amount of money at this time as we move forward. I, I, I think that, uh, the fact that the city manager did not sit down with the city attorney, the lead attorney, and to see if there's any improprieties in there, because there could be without him looking at it. And yes, we, we, and, and this is the issue again, we had another attorney look at it, but, uh, I, I think we have to have the stamp of the lead attorney.
Yes, for me.
Uh, yes, for me.
Yes, for me.
No?
No.
One, two, three.
Four, three.
Thank you. That, congratulations, Chief Diggs and Said. Thank you for putting that together. We move on now, and, uh, if we have, okay, go ahead. If, if we have, uh, if we want to, you know, talk about a process, you know, fine, but, uh, I think.
If you don't mind, can we talk about the process? And I, I think the world of Said, and I think he's a hard-working individual. But I, I constantly complain to him, I don't appreciate getting a two-thousand-page agenda on Saturday for Monday's meeting. We got to have, do a better job of a deadline.
Okay.
The deadline needs to be moved back to where we have five days, seven days, a certain amount of days to look at it. If it doesn't meet that deadline, it just needs to go on the following week.
Okay. I, I think those are things that can be done, yes.
Hey, Sherri Conny, this is Sherri Conny Kowicz. I am using any video here with, under fair use. If you, uh, have criticism, reporting, teaching, et cetera, and please donate. I do not make money from YouTube. And, uh, there are different ways to donate in the, uh, video links. Thanks.